Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, April 9th, 2024 meeting of the Air Planning Board. This meeting, hearing of the Air Planning Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 833-654-80732, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, at DRuiz@air.mass.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 144, prior to the meeting. Welcome, everybody. First item on our agenda, oh, let's do approve the agenda.
So moved.
Wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, can I vote?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous, thank you. First item is continuation of Stratton Hill. And we have a letter requesting extension from Attorney Collins representing the applicant. Julie, would you be so kind as to read the letter into the record?
Sure, it's dated March 22nd, 2024, to the Air Planning Board Town Hall, 1 Main Street, Air Mass, regarding Fox Meadow Realty Corporation, Moulton Construction Corporation, Locust Stratton Hill, definitive subdivision, right road. Dear Board members, here we are at the end of the third week of March. In the plans I promised would be submitted at the end of February are still in the works. As luck would have it, I came down with a bad case of COVID on February 12th, which pretty much killed the month. I am assured that Dillis and Roy Civil Design Group will have the revised plans ready by the end of next week. Kindly, therefore, continue the hearing on this matter to the meeting to be held on May 28th. This should provide sufficiently time for Green International to review and provide comments on the revised layout. Kindly also consider this letter as a request that the time by which the board must complete its hearings and file a decision on this matter be extended until June 28th, 2024. Thanking the board for its patience, time, and consideration, I remain very truly yours, Robert L. Collins.
Thank you, Julie. I need a motion for continuation, right? I can do the motion, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to move that we continue. The definitive subdivision, open space residential development plan, review for off-road Stratton Hill, map six parcels 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, 11 through 55. And we continue that to our meeting on May 28th, 2024.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Just, I did something wrong, okay?
No, 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 there's nothing wrong. I just wanted to update. Doss and Roy did make a submission of their plans this week, so the peer review will start. They, I believe they started today. They commenced their peer review, Green International, so.
And when can we get paper copies to look at?
So if you want to come pick them up, I have them upstairs.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay, you have them.
I just, I just received them.
Okay, good. So just everyone know, whenever.
And it is on the website as well.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, Ken.
So when he uses the term kindly, also consider this letter as a request that the time by which the board must complete its hearings and file a decision. Is he in a position to tell us when we must do anything?
Yes. So remember, the deadline of, has already been extended several times. It is to the applicant who provides the extension on our time to act, once we've exceeded the 160 days. We're well past that, so it's at the applicant's request to extend it, or we make an action, we have to decide on the application that, at that moment.
It says we have to, must complete its hearings and file a decision.
Correct. By the, by the June 28th, yes, that's correct.
Typically, we can potentially, potentially finish the hearings, but even to write the decision and file it.
So the decision must be submitted to the town clerk in Stampton by that date. And that's how it always is. Unless we ask us for an extension. And they've been very, they've been very good about giving us, giving us extensions, so I have no issues with how this was written.
Okay. And just clarification, there are three decisions we could come to.
Yes, so there are three, three types of decisions.
Could you tell us the three types of decisions?
So there is a, so basically you can do a, there's the approval with conditions, there's an approval, there's an approval with conditions, and then there's a denial. So those three different types of, of decisions that the board can come to.
Thanks. Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous, thank you. Next item on our agenda is 33 Third Street. Should we open the public hearing first or read the notice votes?
So you can open the public hearing, and then you can read that.
Okay, so I need a motion, I move that we open the hearing for site plan review and major stormwater management permit for 33 Third Street, map 34 parcel 136.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, how do you vote, Ken?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you. And let me read one thing.
So Kathleen can, she cannot vote, but she can participate in this deliberation.
Excellent, thank you. Just need to read the public hearing notice for site plan and stormwater into the record. The Air Planning Board will be conducting a hybrid public hearing at 6:15 PM on Tuesday, April 9th, 2024, in the first floor meeting room at Airtown Hall, 1 Main Street, to consider the site plan and stormwater applications submitted by AHO Development for the property located at 33 Third Street, Air Mass. The applicant is proposing the construction of three single-family homes that will require the clearing or grading of more than 10,000 square feet of land. The applicant is also seeking a stormwater permit for a major project under the stormwater bylaw in coordination with the site plan review. For more information, please contact the Air Planning Office at 978-772-8220, extension 144, or planning@air.ma.us. Thank you. So what I.
Clarification question, how does that affect with Jeff being absent today?
So we actually have the Mullins rule was adopted at Fall Town, at the, spring, not fall?
Fall.
I'm off, I'm, yes, fall. Fall Town Meeting, so he can Mullins in for the next meeting. What he'll do is review the meeting minutes and the video, and then he'll provide, he'll fill out the Mullins form that I'll give to him, and then he'll be able to sit on the next meeting.
Okay, then, all right.
Through the chair, yes, sir. Is, what is the required, is this a majority, or?
So this, yeah, so this is site plan review and a stormwater management permit, so it is a simple majority.
So if we were to vote on it today, come to a decision, there is, we have sufficient board members to do that?
Yeah, there's four members here, so you would need three members, but I, we will not be at that point, because applicant still has not provided updated plans and responses.
Exactly. So what I suggest, and thank you for your patience, I'm going to just ask the town planner just to give the setup, just what's happening, and then I'll turn it over to the representative of the applicant to do your narrative presentation and to answer what relevant questions is necessary. Ken?
So this application actually is one of the different, it's, it's not a typical application we typically see here at the planning board. This was triggered because of, one, they had a stormwater management permit, and two, onto was the 10,000 square feet of cumulative clearing. So due to 10,000 square feet, they get triggered into site plan review, even though technically single-family and duplex families do not get brought into site plan review. This is one of those little quirks in our bylaw in which the, if the, the more stricter bylaw governs on this section, so the 10,000 square foot grading brings them into site plan review for, for this project. The applicant made a submission site plan, and everyone has their packets with the stormwater management permit report and the, his write-up for a couple of requests for waivers. There's three of them. One of them was for the traffic, which is, which was requested, same from the landscape plan and from the lighting plan. And so typically, we require those, but with this being a single-family development, three single-family homes, we don't typically require site plan review, it's not something that we would, you know, typically do with that. It's something we usually see on commercial, bigger, larger developments, residential, larger residential developments. So there are three waivers that the applicant has requested. And I believe that's, that's it.
So what I'd like to do is hear your presentation, open up the questions from this board, but also the public, and I'm hoping that we can actually vote on the waivers tonight. I hope that everyone has a chance to review it, because I think they're very straightforward. If you could introduce yourself, sir?
Yep, Brandon Ducharme with David E. Ross Associates, here on behalf of AHO Development. And as Danny said, we, we have three single-family homes, each on its own lot. And since the cumulative area of land disturbance is greater than 10,000 square feet, we fall into that provision of the bylaw where we have to go through the site plan approval. The other trigger was the, the major stormwater management permit, and there's a couple of things that we trigger in order to qualify for that. Number one is we have greater than 2,200 square cubic feet of alteration, as well as greater than 5,000 square feet in a critical area.
Right.
And the reason why this is considered a critical area is the fact that it's in the aquifer protection district for a zone two public water supply. So in doing that, obviously, on the plan, we've got the three individual single-family homes, we show the utility connections to existing utilities that are located within Third Street. And then we prepared a stormwater management report that has the operation and maintenance. In essence, what we're proposing is subsurface infiltration using Kultec plastic chambers.
Would that be represented by these rectangles?
Yes. Correct.
That's correct.
And those are, those are basically achieving two things. We're intercepting and all the roof runoff through gutter system, which would be hard-piped to that subsurface infiltration. And then based on the standards of the bylaw, we also need to maintain both the rate of runoff and the volume of runoff leaving our site. So we have proposed two area drains, which are essentially, you know, catch basins where the, a lot of the surface water gets directed.
You show us.
It'll get picked up in both of those drains and also directly infiltrated on-site.
So this one to the right, okay?
And then there's one right here.
Okay, thank you.
And then, as we look at Lot 3, which is the lot all the way to the right, a portion of that house, as well as the stormwater management system, are within the 100-year floodplain.
That's the yellow dash line.
We have filed with the Conservation Commission and have an order of conditions. Number one, for doing work within that, which is considered bordering lands up to flooding, as well as through the bylaw, we're providing compensatory flood storage, which provides, in this case, slightly more flood storage than, than we're filling. And in doing that, we have to essentially shelf out an area outside of the floodplain by stage, which means in one-foot increments based upon the flood storage that was lost. So for instance, between elevation 225 and 226, if we lose a volume in that stage, we're replicating that same volume at that elevation. And that compensatory flood storage area, a portion of that is located within the 100-foot buffer zone, which is also was presented and discussed at the Notice of Intent Hearing. Another unique thing about this project is part of doing this requires us to improve Third Street. It's a gravel, traveled way now, and there's been multiple discussions with the DPW. I know they've been doing some, some work in that area. As you kind of head around Third Street, down towards Marshall Street, they've recently put in a bio-retention basin there and some curving. And what the applicant has agreed to do is essentially, we're working with the DPW to, to design that modification or improvement to Third Street. And the town is on schedule to, to resurface and pave that this summer. So a bulk of the comments, we have received comments, both from the planner, from the DPW, and Conservation, which I'm sure you've seen, and a bulk of those comments really are about the details of the improvements of that, of that right-of-way. I had a discussion again with, with Matt this morning. The right-of-way that's kind of in front of the proposed houses there is only 25 feet wide. And as it stands now, the existing traveled way actually goes beyond the right-of-way onto a budding property.
You can kind of see the, the dash kind of goes, the line right here, goes up into here.
So in looking to correct that, what we're, we're proposing is to shift this improvement further south to reestablish the traveled way within what's the town right-of-way. So this layout here, I have a 22-foot wide paved surface. The comments from DPW is they would like to see us also add a sidewalk. In doing that, it would be a five-foot wide sidewalk with a curbing, obviously, between that and the traveled way. And that leaves us the balance where we could do an 18-foot wide traveled way. And what they'd like to do is super-elevate that, or, or basically pitch it in a southerly direction, so all that stormwater runoff from the impervious would flow southward up against the curbing for the sidewalk. And the drainage would basically work its way down to where that detention basin is that they just constructed. There's a, there's a catch basin and a spillway there. And DPW has accounted for that drainage in, in the design of that, that basin. So at this point, we can either, you know, go over some of the, the comments, I've kind of condensed them all down, because some of them are redundant between letters. If you want to open up to questions, of you folks first, or however you'd like.
Let's do, I'm going to check with my colleagues for questions first, open it up. And then, yes, I would like to go through some of those comments. In particular, I'm interested in the numbers for the compensatory storage of the water in the flood district. Who wants to start? Ken, would you like to?
So Brandon, you mentioned that you had figured the width of the pavement, I think you said you were going to propose 22 feet, but now that, working with the town, we need to get that down to 18 feet with a five-foot sidewalk, so it fits within the 25-foot right-of-way. My right, that's, that's what we're going, what we're talking about?
Yeah, based on the comments, they would like to include that sidewalk, which would reduce the traveled way down to 18 feet.
And that, no problem with fire, police with that? Okay.
Okay. Now, the drawing you submitted clearly needs to be updated to show the continuation of Third Street to where it's going to meet the end of Marshall Street. Is that proposed to be a?
Yeah, and I think you said that you just received the CAD file from.
Yeah, so we're honestly working in conjunction with the DPW. So I just, at the time when we were first initially laying this out, I don't even think they'd begun the basin.
Oh, okay.
And, so I got a CAD file from DPW that has the proposed location of that basin, it has the curbing and some of those details. And, and now I'm trying to, you know, incorporate this design into that. Now, I'll tell you straight out, the, the challenge is the geometry of those right-aways.
Yeah.
And that's where I was hoping to get.
This right here.
I was hoping to get a plan set, and just looking at turning radiuses for a 40-foot vehicle to go through there, it's, it's a challenge. And I just, I've got to get back to DPW and see exactly what they want to do, because if you come down Third Street, take that right, and then you got to hook back up left. I mean, we're nowhere near close what the centerline radii would be per the, the guidance.
Yeah, I mean, currently, right now, it's just gravel in this area. It's like a.
Mud.
Yeah, mud, gravel, like it's not a, it's, it's more of a, just like a cut-through is what it looks like it's more used as.
Yeah.
It's not a more, it's not typically traveled through it.
Right.
When you mentioned that the town was going to pave Third Street, did you think in your mind that they were going to pave the area that you guys are going to do the work in? The new work, or that they're going to end their job by East Street, and you're going to pick it up at East Street and continue the paving now? Because you, I think you said that the town indicated they're going to repave Third Street.
They are, so they're going to pick up, they're going to pave Third Street from the intersection with East, all the way down to Marshall to tie in that area where they just constructed that basin.
I think there might be a misunderstanding.
I will double-check. My, my understanding was they were just doing East and this Third Street right here. I don't think this was being, this was being proposed.
Okay.
But I, I think we should both check, we should both check with DPW. Because based on my conversations. Yeah, that's why I think they wanted to line up the timing on, on when you guys were going to be making your cuts into, into the road, because they're going to be repaving this area right here, this intersection, and all the way down Third Street and up East Street. They want to time it with you guys on getting your, your curb cuts and everything done prior to that, but let's, I think we both should reach.
Sure. However that is, you know, I knew that the concerns in the comment letter was pertaining to.
Timing.
Utility connections.
Yeah, exactly.
Which I took to be, you know, there's, there's other connections that are within Third Street, where we're going to relocate that way.
Let me try, I'll check with, with Matt and Dan.
No, I'm sorry. No, you have the floor, I'm sorry.
So I'm curious as to, you've got the, you know, subsurface drainage systems on lots two and three that are fairly substantial size, and on Lot 1, it's small, doesn't look like Lot 1 includes the drainage for the paved area, the driveway, what the other ones do with the, with the, you know, area drains and whatnot. So is there a reason we don't have a bigger proposed, you know, subsurface system on, I think it's Lot 1, yeah?
Yeah, so in essence, I would say that the, the system on Lot 1 is primarily the rooftop runoff.
That's what it seems to be.
So based on the site grading, much, or the, the balance of that area, including the impervious in the front, as you said, is, is basically going to move along the north side.
And run down the street.
Prior to the street, yeah, and it's going to, it's going to wrap around between Lot 2 and 3. You can kind of see that swale area there, and, and get picked up there.
Oh, you're talking about this one right here?
Yeah, yeah. So when they run the calculations, if you look at the drainage report, they'll do watershed maps, where they basically do exactly what you're saying, that they'll, they identify the, the impervious areas, as well as that topographic area by watershed. And, you know, that area in the back, for instance, you know, just given the fact that, you know, we're accommodating for the impervious surface of the house, so, you know, much of that is overland, and as, you know, you run those, those calculations, you know, we're, we're at or less than what is existing. And, and bear in mind, there was an existing house and driveway there also, a two-family home that's since been raised, since they started this, this project. So and then obviously, as you get all the way down to Lot 3, you know, there's even greater amounts of surface runoff that we wanted to collect and, and account for. And these are all based all the way up through the 100-year storm event, so that, that's the other reason why they're, they're so large. I mean, that's, that's a significant storm event to infiltrate.
You guys comfortable, I mean, DPW is going to?
Yeah, I mean, I know Matt has, I've already had the meeting with Matt and Heather about these, about the stormwater on here. They're, they, they seem relatively comfortable with the, with the way the report is, but I mean, and, but Matt provided his comments that he wanted clarification on.
Okay.
If I may?
Yeah.
So I assume that there's going to be operations and maintenance manuals for each owner for their respective.
Correct.
Infiltration system. I just want to know, Danny, do you know, are there similar infiltration systems affiliated with single-family residences in Air where this has proved successful, and people have successfully maintained them, and it's a non-issue?
In Air, off the top of my head, I don't know. I haven't seen any projects, you know, that since I've been here that I've done, but I've seen it in plenty of other towns, that it does work. What, and one of my comments in there was that, as part of the decision, what happens is there's a stormwater reference that gets, the stormwater decision gets recorded as well, and there's a reference to the O&M plan in there. We'd, we'd like the deed to reference the O&M plan as a, as a, as its own document as well. We had, that was one of the comments that I placed in there.
Yeah, I saw that.
And that's kind of one of the ways that we, that I've seen it done in, in other towns, is they reference it within the deed so that everyone knows that there is one on file, and it's also part of the packages as the homeowner buys the house.
And so just to, to add to that, it's, it's not the most common thing you see, because even under the Well and Protection Act, and most stormwater management, you know, fewer than four residential homes, it's not even required. So it's kind of, you know, well beyond what would typically be required, just because of what we're talking about with the bylaw. So, but, you know, rooftop runoff certainly would be, and, and that, that maintenance usually gets carried through, in some cases, like in the deed is certainly probably the best way to do that, just because typically people notice that. Read through the document that we prepared and, and all that, so.
I was concerned with the grade between 1 and 2. It's tipping from Lot 1 into Lot 2. You're creating some kind of swale there before you get to the residence, so it goes around the building, doesn't, you can see that grade, what's it like, 4 feet, 3, 4 feet, 5 feet?
Yeah, 241 to 238.
Yeah, so that seems a little, like that runoff is going to want to go into Lot 2 from Lot 1.
Absolutely, yeah, that, that'll be, that'll be a drainage throughway. So when they model and analyze each storm event, what they'll do is at the property boundary, or at the wetland, you know, evaluate is, is the construction, you know, despite, you know, the water moving through that direction, is, is the rate of runoff or the volume going to be greater than what the pre-existing is? And in that area, you know, we were able to have less than, or, or meet that standard, so there wasn't a requirement to add additional drainage there. We actually hoped, to be honest, that simply just adding roof infiltration would be enough to hit the numbers, you know, so we were a little surprised when you run that 100-year event, and we had to provide those two area drains, you know, which, you know, adds, certainly adds more costs, but, you know, it's a lot more drainage for, for, you know, three houses.
So that's basically a swale on the lot line of 2 and 3, where the area drain is, coming off the road, but coming off the driveway?
Yeah, this right here, yeah, so that's where the, it basically catches anything that's coming off this way, it's going to come down here, catch in here and go in here.
Okay.
Okay, I think I get it now.
Oh, that's not the overflow.
That's, well, it's got to swale it in to get the drain.
Yeah, it's, it's going to swale in this way, and then it's going to go into the underground.
Interesting.
You indicated in your application that you were going to install gas to the houses, is that right? There is natural gas there.
There's natural gas available, yep.
Do you know if he's going to do it by any chance?
I, I believe so.
In the past, he hasn't done it, so, so I was curious about, because I love, I think natural gas is the alternative, but that's my own personal opinion. All right, that's what I got for now, thanks.
Thank you, Ken. Nathan, you have?
I'm going to go back to what Ken mentioned on Lot 1, the driveway pitching into the road. And that, that would, I think the discussion was that that would be caught in the swale between Lot 2 and 3. But once that's curbed and finished, that will all, will that all continue to the basin?
Yes.
And the basin is sufficient?
And that was my question to Matt, when they sized that basin, because I said, you know, that's going to be a long run, because they wanted to super-elevate that road, and I just said, are you, you know, can that basin accommodate everything that's going to run down that gutter, because it's a few hundred feet, you know? And he said, that's, that's how he laid it out and designed it, so.
It's, it's actually, I believe it's visible right now.
Yeah, it's actually.
You can actually see it is, yeah. And it's quite, it's quite big.
Okay. Have we had, do we have comments yet from DPW on this, or is it still?
Yeah, there's two, there's two rounds of, of, there was a storm, it was when it was, the reason there's two responses, or comments, was when they made the initial submission, it was just going to be stormwater management permit, which they gave us, and that is dated February 28th. And then later on was revised to figure out that they had to come in for site plan review because of the 10,000, so their second letter is March 14th, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, March 14th. So there's two successive comments on this.
But this is apparently still a work in progress.
Yes.
Not really.
The road layout.
Well, the road layout at least, yeah. You know, the addressing the comments portion and getting the updated plans with, for the road. road layout and stuff and figuring that out.
Potentially how much impervious has to be put down to make that turn from Third to Marshall, could, would that affect stormwater?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
So, but it won't affect his stormwater?
No, so that's, yeah, ours is separate, so I'm obviously relying on the DPW and that's why I'm asking the questions, you are, to make sure that as we add curbing, which, you know, before we were assuming that some of that water was going to get picked up and go into our drainage system. So if they want to add a sidewalk and curb that, then it needs to be accommodated for in, in that system.
I just want to follow up on one of Ken's questions there on the pitch now between lot one and two.
This one right here?
Yeah, I think it sounded like your concern, Ken, was infiltration into the lot two house.
Correct.
Is, is that a concern?
Based on the way that, that I, I don't have a concern, I mean, we'll have positive pitch between, you know, there's definitely a swale identified there, but the, the ground surface will obviously be higher along the foundation, even if it's a foot or so, I mean, based on the volume of water coming through there, I'm not worried about it, yeah.
Okay, so the 237 line will, will probably swing up to the core of the house.
Yes, they kind of wrap around. The problem is, it's a lot going on in the plant, so we're labeling that HDPE pipe that's part of the roof collection.
Yep.
But essentially, yeah.
It kind of ties into the house right there. These are the two contour lines. You can see a tie into here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it'll be a shallow swale that, that kind of just runs along there.
Okay.
I think in reality, they're going to work that out in the field.
Exactly.
That's what's going to happen.
That's, that's.
They're going to build it in the field to make that work.
When it gets to the micrograding, when it comes to that kind of, you know, topography, when you're looking at it in the field, you're, you're really going to be doing that, yeah. It's not going to be, the plan can only go so, so close. It's when they get to the, using the elevations going down with, with the topography, they'll figure exactly, exactly with the machine.
Maybe so queue up Jonathan's concerns, which is, could you tell me where the, you talked about replacement for the floodplain, where is that replacement occurring?
So that's, that's right over there. Yeah, so it's kind of hard to tell just from the plan, but essentially there's, there's a mound, you know, a slight rise in, in the topography there, so what we're doing is we're lowering that down to what the adjacent elevation is where the sewer runs through. It's almost like a driveway that's through there now. So essentially just lowering a portion of that, that little rise or hump in the topography. And then we kind of tried to leave a high, a high point between the flood storage and the wetland, just so that there wasn't any sheet flow that was going directly towards the wetlands.
Yeah, it's, it's micrograded in decimals there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So as I understand it then, for the next meeting to be resolved, is there some clarification on the extension of the street? And the other one, I believe, is about the calculations, just to ensure, I believe that Matt perhaps would like our town engineer to go over the calculations for the storm, basically the floodwater replacement, compensatory replacement, and to confirm those. I understand that's still impending, right?
Sure, yeah, I think he just wanted to see them, so we actually had the table on the Notice of Intent Plan. So what I did was I just, I took those calculations from the Notice of Intent and the revised plan that you'll get will have that table on there. We actually, as I said, we, we kind of broke it out by elevation, you know, what the, what the filled volume was, what the compensated and what the net result is.
Julie, did you have any questions?
No.
Kathleen?
I did have a quick question on the, the stormwater maintenance plan. So in there, it says something about the first six months the system comes online, there's like a pretty heavy maintenance schedule or inspection schedule. And I read somewhere that the first part was that the general contractor will perform inspection and then it became unclear to me if the homeowner performs the inspection themselves and like uses these forms to then catalog this, or are they calling somebody to do that inspection? Do you have details on that?
Yeah, I mean, and again, this is where we're kind of balancing that, you know, this is a lot of infrastructure for a single-family home.
Yeah.
So in the report, there, there was some language that covered obviously during construction, which is typically when you might get sediment and stuff coming into that system. So essentially what you want to make sure is until the site's stabilized, you know, if, in the event that any sediment or anything did get into that, that, that would get flushed and cleaned out. And then there is a schedule in there, so once the, the homes are sold, you know, at that point, there's vegetation established. There is ongoing maintenance that, yes, the homeowner will be responsible for performing those inspections. I would imagine, you know, they, they would probably hire somebody. I mean, not that it's that difficult, but, you know, just popping the covers and, you know, making sure that, you know, there's not leaf litter and debris on top of those, those catch basins, you know, looking, looking in the sump there to see if, if, you know, there's accumulated sediment. So it's not exactly difficult stuff, but somebody's just got to.
Got it. And so theoretically, if the home is sold, then, then the homeowner is responsible in that first six, well, it's unclear, I guess, for the six months because presumably the, the stormwater facility came online before the house is being sold, but at some point they are then responsible for these monthly post rainfall, getting it all inspected.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, I think that the six-month really, the, the guidance is, is if you are going to get sediment or deposit into the system, it's going to be in those initial six months. So I think kind of there's more routine inspections that get done, more controls that might be in place. You know, once it's grass vegetated, you know, then it's really, it becomes much more periodic. And, and I think they specify in the report that, and these are ongoing, so basically for the life of the, the system, but just keeping an eye on that.
Yeah, typically the reason why you see it, that, you know, that first six months, it's so stringent on checking it, is because typically what you see is subsurface infiltration for bigger developments, so you have bigger areas that are, have been disturbed, so it, it takes much, much more, you know, much more time for those larger areas to actually get fully grown in. And, because, you know, usually it's done in phases, so there's certain areas that are grown in, some aren't, and that's usually where you see it. This is one of those weird, like in-betweens things where it's like typically you wouldn't see the size of a underground infiltration. Usually you'd see like, you know, some, some, some like little subsurface, you know, ground, the roof drain going straight into the ground with some crushed stone, and that's usually what you'll see. But with these, since the stormwater was triggered, it's, it's kind of a little bit of an extra step that they had to do. So the, the maintenance portion of it, it's not going to be, it's not really difficult. Like he said, it's just going to be, most likely the subsurface will already have been installed and it's been timed and most of that will have already been grown in by the time it's been sold.
More questions?
Yeah, I was going to, I'm, I'm going to open it if you have some more, and then I'd like to open to the public.
Yeah, I just want to ask Danny, so in this particular application, it didn't seem to generate, what is it, 9.6, the tree clearing section of the bylaw?
No, this, this, no, this was the, right, it's the, the land clearing it did trigger.
It triggered?
Yeah, that's why they're here.
No, I thought they were here because of the 10,000 square foot site plan requirement.
Which is part of the 10, the land clearing.
Can you check that?
Yeah. 9.1, it's 9.6.
9.6.
Yeah, so there, so land clearing and grading, it's, if they do anything, so grading of more than 10,000 square feet of land or increments in such total area of an abutting property within the control of any person graded in a 12-month period will exceed 10,000. No person shall commence grading or clearing as defined herein without first obtaining site plan approval by the planning board under this section.
So when we, that's what I'm getting at, so when we, this is in-site plan for basically two pieces, that piece plus the 10,000, it's indicated in the site plan requirement.
So they're, they're both the same thing.
Okay, do we, so we do not have to issue a finding under 9.6, that's what I'm getting at, or do we have to find? For instance, we, do we need, the, the calculation here is easily over than the amount. So I was going to ask you, did you include the work in Third Street when you included the amount of disturbance? You said the total land disturbance for construction of the three dwellings is 34 to 35 or .79, but did you include the land clearing and disturbance to build Third Street as well?
No, so our filing is really just for the three lots. In, in fact of a previous filing, that's when the town said, hey, if, if you're going to be improving these lots, we would, we would like to work with you to fix and realign Third Street. So it's, it's, it's kind of separate, but it's, it's also included in this project. Regardless, I mean, obviously we, we trigger it, so if you did add that, we'd still trigger it.
Yeah.
And just in terms of what you're saying, like the, the two different bylaws, I, I honestly think you might need to vote on both. This is more your opinion. The only reason why I say that is because we initially thought we were not susceptible to the site plan review because, you know, it says 10,000 square feet. Except, and your exception is single-family homes, so we're like, oh, we're exempt. And when they grabbed that parallel bylaw, that's when I said, no, you, you do need to file, so that's.
Yeah, so the, the way the, the building commissioner, as he is the zoning enforcement officer, he determined that because our bylaw, the way our bylaw works, it's the more strict, more stringent bylaw, you know, takes it over. So because they triggered this 10,000 square foot, they have to do site plan review.
Yeah, right.
So yes, so the approval for site plan review is under 9.6 and 3.5, but five, 3.5 references this section.
Yeah, okay, no, good with that. I'm sure everyone else is. It just seemed to me that, that the amount of clearing would be potentially more than what you're showing on the, because when you build a compensatory flood storage plus the houses, plus the subsurface systems, plus the street, it's, I don't know.
I mean, it, it may be more if he includes the street, but the street, remember, that's not going to change anything within the actual application. The, the, the street is from the town's portion.
So should we have the town submit an application for the tree clearing on the street?
No, because it wouldn't trigger the 10,000. It's a, it's, I understand what you're trying to say. I get it, but it's, there's not 10,000 square feet that they're clearing in the road.
The trees, if, if our goal is to protect trees.
Yeah.
Then any part of the process of this construction process, whether it be town part or applicant spot on the land, should be considered when we go do, let's say, a site visit and look at what's disturbed and how it's changed. Because at the end of the day, I think that's what's going to have an effect on what people see. Because they're going to blame him or blame the applicant for the work on the street. So in my opinion, this is only my opinion.
Yeah, so I.
I think we have to take a holistic, I'm trying to take a holistic view of the whole job.
Yes, and I understand what you're saying. It's, I think if you want him to revise the numbers, he, I mean, he can show that with them.
No, I don't, I'm not asking him to do it. I'm asking, I guess, engineering to do it, to say, you know, what's, what's the effect of them building a street? I'm trying to go back to the fact that there was a potential here for another type of construction and maybe this lot would not have required a street to be built all the way down to the end of Marshall Street. But now that's that, I think we have to take a look at what is the impact of building that street up? That's all I'm saying. You guys can disagree whatever you want, but.
And I mean.
I want to be thoughtful in the whole process.
I feel like, and I think his application does account for everything that's being done in the road, it does. I believe he has the stormwater accounts for it and the, yes, his, the number on the grading square footage doesn't account, isn't accounted for in the application, but everything else is, is, is accounted for.
I think we need to get a, a letter from Matt, not an oral presentation that says, yes, we've considered how much drainage is going down the street, that's going in, we're hurrying it, but we want to see it.
So I'll have, I can have Matt provide that and come to the next meeting.
I want to make sure we, we see what the effect of the street is.
Okay.
And that clearing and grading of the street is, I think we should label every tree that's being taken down out there.
And that was.
No, you said that.
That is one of my comments as well.
So we need to agree that the applicant.
Yeah, so I'll have, I'll have Matt provide a letter for you, for the board, I mean, for the board. And I'll have him come to the next meeting and he can go through it with the board.
Okay, thanks. Nathan?
On that, just briefly, not for this application, but if the town is clearing property that according to 9.6 abuts, property within, that is going to be graded within 12 months such that increments exceed 10,000, then that, then that property owner, should they also make a, come before the board? What I'm saying is should, so the DPW, is, is, should the DPW, because they're, they're going to be developing property, I'm assuming within 12 months of this applicant, that will have property, according to 9.6, in increments such that the total land area of a budding property.
It's, yeah, but there's a, there's a key word, it talks about ownership.
That's supposed to be ownership.
Yeah, it talks about the ownership, yeah. It, it specifies that same ownership.
So somebody can't go in and build this house.
Yeah.
And come back later, build the next house, come back later, build the next house and get away with the whole thing.
Yeah, that's kind of how that was written. It's so that someone doesn't, you know, build one in four months.
Sure.
Build one in four months and then another four months. It's so that, you, you know, they're all going to be contiguous, they're all going to be developed by the same person, you're going to be triggered. It's so, you're not going to have it where one person owns this, another person owns this, one person's clearing this much, one person, you can't, that's not how that, you can't force them.
So at the end of the day, I, I think I, I agree with Ken that the DPW should give us something in writing. I'd also like to hear a presentation of when, of their intent to finish this, this road and when they expect that to happen.
More clarification?
So you want, you want a clarification on the effect of the stormwater from expanding, from creating this road, expanding Third Street?
Didn't, didn't Matt already include those calculations when he designed that new basin? We just heard that, but we haven't seen it.
Seen what?
Have we seen it in writing or did we just heard it?
No, I, I've seen it because that was part of our land use meeting, so when we met, we had already talked about that. But I, I can have him provide it as, as a letter, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, okay.
But I mean, we, we have to, we have another meeting, so it's not like we're holding anything off.
Mr. Chair, my, my concern isn't the stormwater per se, but the town's intent and, and frankly, can the town afford to finish Third Street?
Can you say that again? If the town can afford to pay for, to finish Third Street.
Is that, is.
That's not part of the.
Yeah, I mean, just, is it, not, not for this applicant, but is it, is it part, there, the town is going to be required to finish Third Street?
So the, let's, let's, the, the town, DPW is working with the applicant to have them extend Third Street to, for access for these three lots.
Them.
That's, that's all they're responsible for. The town from there, at that point, the town is going to be dealing with this, I believe, themselves. Because this is, this can't be part of this application.
It's not clear.
No, no.
It's not clear.
Because this is not.
First of all, let me go backwards. The town is repaving Third Street because, you know, they did a ton of drainage and water.
Yeah, two east.
There's already been work done, not in front of these homes, but down Third Street.
Correct.
So that is a, that's a continuation of that project to put the new paving in.
Yep.
Then we basically saw, I think, I'm pretty sure I read that they said there was a line on the plan. Want me to read it, the quote? DPW says we're going.
Right here. They're going to, they're going to be stopping right here.
It said a line on the plan, which I thought was fascinating, you know, because I, I said, where's the line?
There is, right here. So this is the existing, this is that line that they're going to.
Okay, so there you go. So that's, that is very helpful. Okay, so there you go, so that is very helpful.
Because if you see right here, this is the edge of pavement right here, it just doesn't.
This is where you didn't, you didn't, this didn't click, I guess, Brandon, because you thought they were gonna pave down in front of the units, in front of the new homes.
Some, yeah.
It says DPW plans a paving project, the town will stop paving work at the line shown on the proposed thirty-three Third Street site plan. I said to myself, what line? So that's the line, that's the line. Okay, so there'll be a saw cut right there, the town ends their work, as far as we know.
That's, that's why the comment from, from the DPW and myself was to line up the timing on when they were gonna be doing, entering into the street for utilities, because we don't wanna have to.
I think they've already done it, but that's okay.
Well, yeah, I, that's, I don't know exactly if they've done those or not, that's why I was.
So who's on the hook for the remainder of Third Street?
We believe the applicant. But Brandon.
And that's, that's what the understanding was between.
That's what I, remember, I just wanna take, I'm gonna roll back the time machine to twenty minutes ago, when I asked remaining issues. And I said, one of them was the calculations for the water compensation, but the other is the disposition of the road. That's what I'm getting at, so that remains a question mark. And as part of the question mark, who's on the hook for the remainder from East Street to Marshall Street? Who's responsible for constructing that road?
And based on our site visit that we met with, out on site with Charlie, the Police Department, DPW, and Fire, when we met out there with the general contractor.
General contractor, Dan Aho?
It wasn't Dan Aho, it was someone else from his company. All the, the discussion was that they would be responsible for extending that, because it's access for their project. But they wanted it to.
That was your discussion.
That was, that was the last, and that's why they were triggered into the stormwater and to discussions with DPW as to bringing that road to standards that the DPW wanted.
Yeah, I just wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, he wasn't, no, he wasn't there, that's why he's, he can't speak to.
My only task is to design it.
He put the drawing together.
So, yes, he put the drawing together, but remember, he was not there.
We're talking a hundred grand here, we're talking a lot of money, you know, it could be a hundred fifty thousand or something like that. I mean, it's a lot.
Okay, so.
I can, I can, I can raise this to Dan and to Charlie and make sure that they reach out to Mr. Aho about this, because that's, that is something that's outside of the planning board's purview.
Okay, if you would expand this again, please? So, again, there's a line here.
Yes.
All right, but I'm concerned about two portions now. There's the portion of Third Street that goes in front of properties, but what about from the property to Michelle?
That is the town's responsibility, the applicant is not responsible for that.
And including the turning rate, all the issues we just talked about, the turning rate, that's the town's gonna figure that out?
The applicant cannot be held responsible for that.
I just want the clarity.
Yeah, that is not the applicant's responsibility as one, it has nothing to do with the application, as that is before us. The only thing that we've discussed about on Marshall Street was when they were gonna put in the road and curbing, making sure that that, when it goes into there, it would keep going into the rain garden.
So it's been very generous of the applicant.
It's not what it reads, okay?
I, okay, maybe it doesn't read that way, but I'm telling you.
The pros roadway, the pros roadway, not driveway, roadway, shall be extended further south to properly tie into the existing roadway at Marshall Street slash Third Street intersection. That's way the hell down there, a hundred fifty feet.
That's right.
So it's just, the word, the whole wording is.
I'll have to talk to Matt and to the.
It says, you know, it says proposed road, shall, the word shall usually means we haven't negotiated about it, just means it has to be done. Shall be extended further south, so there's a lot of questions here, the size, the size of the sidewalk.
Reading from?
Reading from this, what we're reading today, which comments that we got.
Yeah, there's two DPW comments, that's why he's, he's asking which one.
And you were just referring to item number five under the general comments?
I was referring to.
Number three.
Number three.
Is what he's saying, right, right. So I'll, that, so I'll talk to Matt.
See, the problem, I can see where the problem is, because this was written in passive language, as if the roadway were built itself. What's missing is agency. Who is building the road? It's missing, that's, because I had the same confusion, meaning like, the pros roadway shall, well, the roadway is gonna do it itself. Let's get that real clear.
I will talk to Matt, Dan, and Charlie, and we'll have to reach out to Mr. Aho and directly speak to him about those.
Okay. My understanding is that both the applicant and the DPW are working, who's, yes.
Yeah, that's my understanding, is that they've already worked it out.
Yeah, so.
All of us can just sit here and figure this out.
Information.
Yeah, yes.
I'll provide it to. We need that clear. Now, what I'd like to do before we.
Oh, no, no, you're right, we'll provide it, we'll let her speak after.
I'd like to invite anyone in the public who'd like to make comments. First, I'm gonna address the room, and then I'm gonna turn to the Zoom participants. Anyone in the room have any questions or comments and would like to come forward to the table? Okay, I believe, did I, did I see a hand? Yes, sir. Just give you, come on up, pull up a chair, name, name and address, et cetera.
Hi, my name is Tori Stevens.
Hi.
My name is spelled wrong on the plot line, it says Stevens with a V, and it's actually with a P, so I have to handle that with the town.
And the address, I'm sorry. We gotta go to the registry.
Yeah, we don't, we're not responding to that.
It's okay, so I live at ten East Street, a corner lot that is gonna be affected by this. Obviously, like, I understand y'all brought the property, that's great. I see that there's been a lot of due diligence and really interesting discussion and care for the trees, which is something I also care for, not because I'm like a tree hugger, but because of the heat index that I know comes with the reducing so many trees. There's already been a lot of trees produced in the area, and I think, you know, it's just gonna be a little bit warmer in that area. So I hope that if the town could work with you all, and if there's any old trees there that won't affect like what's going on in the lot, that they could be saved. So if there's just some sort of, you know, look to this, and really good look, and not just like a careless kind of, we're just axing these because we need to get, you know, I'm not saying that you would be, but I'm just, I just, if there's some care there, that'd be really nice. And then I had questions around the expansion of the street, because the property line in that street is pretty close, and I'm just wondering if there is actually enough room. Is the goal here to be able to fit two cars in passing on the street?
So the way, just, so this area is actually twenty-five feet wide, Third Street.
Third Street are.
The actual, the actual deed layout for the right-of-way is twenty, twenty-five feet wide. So, but as it is now, as you, I mean, I know you know that area, so it's not really, it's, how wide is it right now?
Driveway, twelve feet?
Maybe twelve feet, yeah, it's maybe twelve feet right now. So that's kind of how it's functioning, is a driveway. The, the idea is to shift it, so this is that existing line, and it kind of, yeah, it's on his property, quite a way. It's gonna be shifted down here, and so the roadway should be, will be within the right-of-way, so it'll fit within the twenty-five-foot right-of-way.
All right, and then where would the sidewalks be going?
So this is, this is something that we've, that was brought up, would be, it would have to be on the south side, because there is a sidewalk that's existing on this side. So just to continue it this way.
Okay, so the shift will be away from our house?
Yeah, it's gonna be shifting away from your house, not towards your house, yeah.
Everything's gonna be coming further away, because right now that travelway is actually on your, your property.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good distance on your property.
Okay.
You're getting your.
I mean, that was one of my concerns, and then the other one was just that, I know that there's already been a lot of trees taken down, and so just the world's getting warmer, and it'd be nice to have like some shade and trees.
Yeah, we did request that the applicant, you know, before they, they do anything with Third Street, is lay out the roadway, and also put ribbon on the trees that would be removed, so that when we were out, when we're out there, we can actually see what's, what's going to be taken down. Yes, yes.
Yeah, and I just, like, if there's any trees, I know the modern way of, you know, kind of putting in a new home is to kind of get rid of the trees, because most home, a lot of homeowners, I'm not one of those homeowners, that you don't wanna deal with the leaves, you don't wanna deal with maybe the insurance problem of a, you know, branch falling on your home or whatever. But like, some owners do like some trees, so maybe consider like leaving some on the property so that the owner can then decide if they wanna get rid of some trees. They're just making an appeal to you, but I know that you own the property, so it's your choice. Or you work, I don't know if you own the property.
I'm just the engineer.
I don't know if you could pass that message along, that's like, you know, that's, if they could keep some trees on the property, I think maybe there's a family out there that would like that, you know, some shade cover and not the kind of clear-cut style, and I think that would fit better with how the neighborhood already is.
Yeah, I don't wanna make any promises, certainly, I mean, the challenge is that right-of-way is so narrow, and the improvements that we're being directed to squeeze into that is already kind of beyond capacity. But I know from the applicant, I mean, they would probably rather see trees along the front, just because they are so close to that road. It would be nice to have a little bit of a buffer, you know, if, if they can, or, you know.
Right, so again, just like, if you could pass along to them, like, very happy they're gonna develop the property, understand that they own the property, and that is our only appeal that we would make to the owners.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Pauline, did you have your hand up before?
I think it was Sarah.
Sarah, did you have your hand up?
It was Pauline.
Oh, was it Pauline?
No, I, yes, Jonathan, thank you, I did have my hand up, but it really is no matter anymore. I was just gonna ask you all to please not talk over one another, because it's very hard to even hear one person when three people are talking. But since you recognize me, I'd like to ask Danny Ruiz, are there documents attached to this meeting? I looked today and I saw nothing related to this meeting, and maybe they were filed earlier? So could you please at least let us know where those are?
Yeah, so Pauline, it's, like I've told you to prior meetings, there is a page on our website, on the planning board website, and actually I can just walk you through it right now. So on our current projects, applications, you can see all the plan information is right here. And if you go to meeting materials, we have it for each meeting. Anything that's outside of the plans is gonna be put right here.
And I looked today, and I appreciate that, but I didn't see anything specific to this meeting, so I wonder if there's a way to make that a little more user-friendly. I can find what I'm looking for, but everybody else can't, is all I'm suggesting.
I mean, if it's, we, on our agenda, we specifically called out the project thirty-three Third Street, and the plans are under current projects. I, I don't know what else you'd like me to do.
Thank you.
No, Sarah, no, as long as they've not been altered or updated, I think that's fair.
Yeah, nothing, nothing updated has been submitted.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Pauline. Sarah, did you have a, did you have a question or comment?
You're muted, Sarah.
Who's Sarah?
The second one down on the.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, just one question, Sarah, with the eleven Garten Cherry Road, oh, that's my mirror, sorry, I don't want it to be on. So I was just curious, did you, did you say whether the road was gonna be two-way or just one-way?
It'll be two-way.
It'll be two-way, thank you.
All right, thank you. I think that since we're here, we're, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't see you, come on up, please.
I wasn't here for the first meeting, I guess, I had legs, hips, whatever.
This is the first meeting.
This is the first.
Wasn't there one in the, in the fall?
No.
In the fall?
That was conservation.
Oh, there was a meeting in conservation, not in the fall. Oh, the ZBA did, there was an application before the ZBA for two special fam, uh, two special permits for duplexes.
Yes.
That was, so that was through the zoning board, those were denied.
Okay, okay.
And if you could state your name and address, please?
Mary Ann Bowler, and it's twenty-one Third Street.
Thank you, welcome, Ms. Bowler.
I, I'm not, you know, an engineer or anything. When you say swales, is it just little gullies, is there a culvert? You know, where the water's gonna be, you know, directed? What is that?
So, yeah, a swale is kind of a low area or depression where the contour, you know, directs that surface runoff.
Okay, and, and so that will be on the person's property? And then it takes it down to the rectangular things?
Yeah, so it'll, it'll, it'll take the drainage off the road, it'll come down into this swale, so the way it's kind of designed is to create.
Okay, so what if they wanna put something on that swale? They're not gonna be able to do that?
No.
Okay, and it's not a culvert, so that no little kid could get caught?
There's just a small little area drain.
Okay, and then the water receptacles or whatever they are, what if they don't maintain it?
If they don't maintain it, so there can be some issues, some backup from that, but based on the app, so because they're going to be, there's gonna be a decision, there is going to be some stormwater, they're gonna have to submit the inspection reports to the town, and that'll be required by them.
Okay, 'cause I have, at twenty-one, the town, the water department, sewer department, has to go down and clear out the septic system there.
Sewer line.
Sewer line, right. Where is their sewer line gonna be? Is that gonna be the one that meets up?
So their sewer line, right now, it's tied, so it's right here, it's proposed, so it's gonna tie into this sewer line down here.
Okay, okay, so it's not gonna be down the back?
The third house is gonna go into the.
Yeah, and then.
The third lot is gonna be in the back, yes.
Yeah, it's gonna be tied into here, into the one that's running behind the property.
Okay, and that's not tied to where mine is? The only reason I'm asking is because.
So I don't know where yours is, yours is further up this way?
Yep.
Yeah, so the way, I don't know, I'm assuming the pitch pitches this way, and then up to East Street.
Beyond that.
Yeah, so I don't.
You don't know?
I don't know what the, what the pitch of the sewer is, it doesn't show me on the, if it, where, if it's going down this way or if it's going up East Street, do you know?
I believe it's going that way.
Is it, it's going down Third Street? Yes, so.
Or it's mine, yeah, okay. Because there was another development, is it Shelley Lane or something like that, and they had three or four houses, and they kept throwing pampers and everything down, and these guys would come down all through my yard with their big machinery, ruining the lawn, and I'm like, okay, is this gonna happen with this bunch of people? And then the other consideration I've been thinking of is, you know, plus the fact that the swales were not, not gonna be underground, they're gonna be above ground, and the fact that the people aren't gonna maintain it, what about all the vegetation coming off of Grove Pond?
So they're not, they're not touching, so there's, this is all buffer, wetland buffer, so they're not doing any work within that, I believe, right? I don't think you're proposing anything.
It's a tiny amount.
The only one that there is proposed is, is on this project, on this.
It's large.
So they're not, there's no clearing in that area.
All right, it's just that there's a lot of vegetation, and will it get into those water receptacles, or whatever they are?
Uh, that's, it would have to, this whole thing would really have to overgrow quite a long way to reach up to, up to the front of the lot.
It's conservation. I'm talking about the. It's really conservation.
Pond face of the lot.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Not the front.
And I understand that, so the sewer portion is up at the front of the, I mean, the water portion is up at the front of the site.
Yeah, but the sewers.
Yeah, so, oh, the sewer's underground, are you talking, I'm confused, are you talking about sewer or stormwater?
I'm not talking about stormwater, I'm talking about the sewer.
Oh.
DPW.
Are you, yeah, so I believe the DPW is gonna maintain it, because it's the, it's the DPW's easement, so.
It is, it is what, yeah, they do, they're the ones that come down.
Yeah, so the DPW maintains that, I.
And that's actually good to point out. Part of this, right now, there is not an easement across any of these lots for that sewer, so one of the comments and one thing that the applicant is also gonna do is provide an easement so that the town can continue to maintain that sewer.
Yeah.
Stepping driving down there.
Well, so I, I don't know where your lot is down here, but are you, do they go along the back of your property?
It does, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's, I don't, this won't affect your lot that I know of. I mean, the overgrown, if anything overgrows over here, it won't affect your lot.
Yeah, there's just, there's just a lot of, you know, marshy, rocky.
Yep.
Yeah, and I don't know, I mean, it just, the more rain we have, the worse it's probably gonna get.
Yeah.
And so I just was wondering if there's gonna be like this huge backup of junk, you know, coming around, I don't know.
I, no.
See, again, I'm not an engineer.
No, I know, no, I, the, I mean, so what'll happen is if, this is within the wetland buffer, so we're not really allowed to, you're not allowed to touch anything in that area.
Right.
But the DPW, if there is an easement in there, I, I mean, Heather may be able to talk to this a little bit more, they have the ability to maintain.
Yeah, any sort of maintenance to existing utilities is exempt from the well protection act, so anything within that easement. anything within that easement, anything within sewer line, stormwater, water lines, roadways, any sort of utility is allowed to be maintained and cleared up and reinstalled within those right-of-ways without going through conservation approval. They still do per our bylaw, wetlands bylaw, but it's usually very minor. And we do have a 50-foot no disturb zone, which is what that first line is from the pond. If it was the plans, the smaller dash line, that's the limit of clearing. They're not clearing anything beyond that, so they're way outside the 50, either outside the 100 foot, so there's no vegetation that's gonna be touched, except for the maintain that sewer line easement that's gonna run through the side.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd like to do these waivers.
Okay.
So we have, the applicant has requested three waivers, and I think that, I'd like to take the opportunity tonight to go through each one. And Danny, so what we need to do is a finding and, and a decision of approval or not.
Yes.
There are three. To waive the detailed landscape plan, the vehicular traffic and circulation study, and a photometric plan. And I'm assuming everyone's read, or I'm talking to the board, has read the town planner's report. I happen to, I do agree with the town planner that these merit waiving, but let's go through each one, talk about what it is and why it's not waived without detriment to the town.
Yes.
Detailed landscape plan.
So, the project does not involve the construction of detached parking areas that would typically require landscape planting to provide screening from abutters, abutting properties. Each single-family private driveway, family private driveway provides access to garages attached to the residence. Homeowners will provide ornamental landscaping to enhance the overall aesthetics as needed.
Yeah, and, and, you know, if I was constructing a finding, I would say that a detailed landscape plan is typical, in the typical site plan review, but given the small scope of this and, and the, and the simple, single-family residence design, it doesn't seem applicable here, so I think that the waiver makes sense to me. I open it to discussion.
Makes sense.
Yeah? Can I have a motion to, to approve the waiver? The applicant's request for waiver on the landscape, detailed landscape plan.
Give it a shot.
Go for it.
Make a motion that we approve the waiver for a detailed landscape plan for 33 Third Street, map 34, parcel 136.
Well done. A second?
Seconded.
Wonderful. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to itemize the exact spot that these waivers are being granted from? In other words-
Section within our site plan review?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, we can actually, I'll do that right now.
Let's do that, and we'll have a friendly amendment to the, to the motion, and it includes the appropriate section.
I'll give you each of the, each of the sections. So we are, just gonna make sure this is everything. Yes, okay, yep. All right, so it is section four of the site plan rules and regulations. Section 4C. Landscaping, open space, drainage, and stormwater environment features. Section is eight, is 14. A landscape plan and description of onsite, which meets requirements of sections 9.16 and 9.2 of the air zoning bylaw.
Okay, so if we could put that into a sentence, a friendly amendment that makes, just referencing the detailed landscape plan as per section 4C, item-
C, item 14.
Item 14.
I agree.
Acceptable?
Seconded.
Excellent, wonderful. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ken, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Julie?
Aye.
Chair says aye, unanimous, so that we waive that. The next one is a request of the waiver for the traffic report, fundamentally. And again, this is similar to, this is such a low-impact project, that's how we would find it, that really it's, it's overkill and unnecessary. Did you have anything to add to that reflection?
No.
All right. Any discussion before we go into a motion? Yes, sir.
Just, this is a concern, not necessarily, not necessarily here, but I do wanna be consistent in town, that we do have some problems with small, narrow streets, and so I'm, I want to give, do caution to waiving this. Because that can be, that can be a problem. I appreciate that there's dual egress. Presumably, we'll find out if there's gonna be dual egress to Marshall Street. But the, I'm curious, if once Third Street is almost a straight shot, will cars prefer that over East Street to get to Route 2?
I just, just to clarify, a traffic study wouldn't tell you that.
Yeah.
And then that's, that's, this is what that's-
Yeah, I don't wanna burden us with the traffic study, just just wanna at least take-
Also, the proposed road, I think, is wider than the driveway-like structure that exists today.
Yes, but the driveway structure is rough, and nobody is going to use it for their commute. So I-
Yeah, good point.
I'm just, I'm gonna just take a pause and consider it.
Okay. Any other further reflections? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, great.
And just so you know, the section is-
He's gonna give you the section?
So, from site plan, it's section four of our site plan review, site plan review regulations. Section 4E, the whole thing is what we're-
Okay. I move that we waive the vehicular and, is that what it's called? Vehicular and-
Vehicular traffic-
Traffic and circulation? Requirement per section 4E of the site plan regulations for 30, for the project at 33 Third Street, map 34, parcel 136.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Ken, how do you vote?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So we approve that waiver. And the third waiver is for the photometric plan for the outdoor lighting, and again, I think the same thinking is similar. It's, it's basically three single families with just the necessary safety lighting for the garages, or et cetera. What's the section for this, sir?
And this one is under our site plan review rules and regulations, section 4G2.
G2.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the photometric plan for outdoor lighting per site plan regulation 4.G2 for 30, for the Third Street project. Map 34, parcel 136.
Thank you, sir.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ken?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Nathan says aye. It's unanimous, thank you. I think we, um-
Is this just a type, by the way, it says four waivers? There's not another one?
Bad today.
You all right?
Thank you for catching that. That is, let me just, yeah. I wanna see why that was even, I mean, I just may have carried that over from a different project, but I don't think so.
I don't know, I didn't know if I missed one.
So do we need a motion for continuance? Just looking, just one second, I just wanna make sure I have all the waivers that we were- Yeah, no, it's just the third.
It is just the third.
Just the third, okay. I just wanted to make sure, I'm like, that-
Yeah. And there are only three boys.
Yes, we are.
We should discuss that.
Yes, we, we should. But are we able to let the gentleman go home?
I think we should do it while we have-
Okay.
I think we can do-
Chain him to the table.
So, 'cause they'll, you, the board's gonna wanna see the the right-of-way state, and they're gonna wanna see the trees that are gonna be taken down. So they're at least some sort of ribbon or marking around them.
Sure, and I think traditionally, we've been looking at Thursday mornings at 8:00, is it, because that works best for everyone's schedule. Would that be something doable?
Let's just make sure with Kathleen.
Oh, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
On this Thursday?
Which, let's, that's what we're gonna talk about.
I think what we would want, because I have to post an agenda for our site visits. So we could do the next week, but I am getting surgery on Tuesday, next Tuesday, so I will be out of the office that week. But you guys are welcome to still do it.
Can we wait a week, or is, like, is that bad for-
They would be back on the 23rd, is the problem.
So we gotta see before it goes-
Yeah, we want them to, we wanna be able to have you guys see it before.
Okay.
I've been on site, I've, I've seen it, so I know.
Are we comfortable with Danny not being there, or would we like, I mean, Mon, Monday, Tuesday morning?
Monday is Patriot's Day, just so you know.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm talking about the 22nd.
Oh, the 22nd on-
Is that enough time for-
Yeah, that, I could do the 22nd.
I appreciate his expertise, but if we have to go, we have to go.
So are we, do we have a proposal for Monday morning? Is that the idea? Or, or what?
It's Springtown meeting night, though, are you gonna be like-
I'm good.
Dear God, please don't make me see these people all day.
Don't worry.
I would prefer the 18th.
What's that, Thursday?
Thursday.
It's okay with me. I mean, we can do it out, Mr. Ruiz, if we have to.
I trust Ken.
So, yeah, so, so let's say Thursday, the 18th?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Heather can actually fill in, fill in for me.
That would be wonderful. Thank you, Heather, I appreciate that. Okay, and we'll meet at Thursday?
We come Thursday.
Okay, so I'll have, I'll have Sam post an agenda for it.
Can you send us a reminder email?
Yes.
So that we all remember to put it on our calendars?
Assuming the applicant-
And assuming you guys that that's okay with you?
Yep.
So, um, can we clarify that we may have to have a member of DPW there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to Matt, and I'll-
We have to have Dan Aho there. Himself, unless you feel he's gonna authorize you to. Well, we say, you know, we want this whole new road built.
We can have him there, yeah, like, 8:00 AM, I don't know.
Oh, well, they really, they get up real early.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll post an agenda, and I'll reach out to Matt, and-
And we need a continuance for the public hearing?
Just one question, in the interest of my small project that I haven't actually started officially, can I just ask that we are aiming for 8:00 to 8:30 for this site visit? And we'll, we'll do our best to keep it to a-
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we will.
Okay.
And we all have to remember the rules, that we can't share our opinions or deliberate in any manner while we're out in the field.
And no fun.
So-
No fun.
I need a, a, a motion to, I'll make a motion, I make a motion to continue the public hearing for 33 Third Street to our next scheduled meeting on-
April 23rd.
On April 23rd.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ken?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jonathan says aye, so we have a continued, thank you, sir.
Right, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thursday, yes.
Everything you've done here today. Thank you, sir. Have a good one. Okay, and we have a number of updates?
Yes.
Danny, take the lead.
My agenda's right here. All right, so, project status updates. Miss Sawyer Foods, they were intending on being at this meeting. Something came up, so they're going to make their submission, I'm thinking, soon, probably. I don't know if they'll make it for the 23rd, but they'll make it at least for the the meeting in May, which is the 28th, 'cause we don't have a meeting on election.
Okay.
42 Park Street, and so, 42 Park Street, they have started construction. The house was torn down completely. Charlie made an inspection of the house and deemed that the road, I mean, the house could not be saved because it was completely rotted, so none of the house could be saved. The only portion of it that was saved was the foundation that was being retained, you know, so that they wouldn't lose the knock-on formity. And so construction has started, and they're, they've been moving along. They've done, everything onsite's been pretty well, been going, going pretty well. Heather and I have done a couple inspections already, so-
So you saw the foundation remain, that remained?
Yeah.
Yep. I missed it, then.
Yeah, I mean, Heather and I both saw it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I drove by too, and I'm like, you said that, like, really, the foundation's still there? The cement truck was there today, too, though.
It's torn another foundation inside those walls, or something?
Yeah, so they were using, they had to remain, this was a, we had a conversation with Charlie about this. The foundation was to retain, and they were gonna pour round that foundation, I mean, the existing foundation to reinforce it.
Well, they have, they have to put a foundation to build, to put a building on. Okay, thank you.
Good.
Yep.
I just wanna clarify that the building was not torn down without a meeting with
Yes.
The town planner and the building inspector.
We had our pre-construction meeting.
There was a pre-construction meeting, so this was not, and the applicant didn't merely
Yeah.
Pull it down, it was-
No, the pre-construction meeting happened on April 1st.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. 91 Groton Harvard Road.
Yes, so 91 Groton Harvard Road, they have made their submission for site plan review and stormwater management permit. We have a land use meeting Thursday, and comments are due Friday, so they'll be before us on the 23rd. We'll get all of our comments over to them as soon as, you know, we've had our land use meeting and comments have been submitted, and then they can start working on their responses and for for the 23rd. I don't know if they'll have everything ready for the 23rd, but they'll be at least doing their initial presentation.
Okay, great.
Can you just refresh what the project is that's going there?
Yes, so 91 Groton Harvard Road is right next to the transfer station. They have, it's the existing old-
Burning truck.
Yes, that's, it's the old trucking company that was there. They are going to be tearing down the old building and building a new, they're gonna do a new building there. Two parking lots, and some subsurface infiltration.
Still for the trucking operation?
Yeah, so the new use is a concrete trucking operation.
Okay.
Molding, right, the forms, concrete forms, right?
They do concrete, it's, concrete, Atlantic concrete?
Who are the Atlantic concrete companies?
That's it.
They're the ones that came before the planning board a couple years ago for Westford Road. They moved from Westford Road over there.
Oh, I remember them, okay. I didn't realize it was the same company. Okay, thank you.
So there, it's a, it's, it's a similar use, they're just, it's gonna be, there's gonna be like trucks, cranes, you know, kinda construction vehicles and stuff like that.
Is that the one we visited? Like, it was like 12 degrees out or something?
Probably.
Yeah, I remember that.
I mean, I do those site visits, probably.
It was way back. I still have the frostbite from that.
Yes, I do remember that. Thank you.
All right, town meeting update?
Yes, so, um, let me just pull the town warrant up. There were some, some minor modifications that were done to the town warrant on some of the items that the board had voted on. The four articles that were, the board voted on were,
Been a long night.
So Article 25 is the zoning bylaw amendment for the updated town zoning map. So that one, there really weren't any changes to. Article 26 is the zoning bylaw, ZBA section that's being updated as well. No, there were no changes to that. So 27, Article 27, is the table of use regulations. There, it was updated to Article 27, and there were just some minor amendments to it, just, so she said, chapter 320 zoning, Article 5 use regulations, sections 320.25, uh, .52, table of use, A, attachment by one, and then deleting the strike-through text and inserting the underlined bold text as follows. So that was the amendment.
Can we comment on this as we go along, or do you wanna wait till it's done?
Go ahead. You can, no, we can go by user article.
Okay, so deleting the strike-through text and inserting underlined bold text.
Yep.
So the only strike-through I saw was down there, in the text.
Yep, this and down here.
In the columns where we made changes to the requirements in A1 and A2. There was no strike-through there.
Correct.
And that's the way she wanted it.
Yeah, yes.
The town council.
Yep, town council reviewed these, and she sent them back to me to, for a review.
Well, Well, I mean, if you were deleting the strike-through text and inserting the underline, are you assuming that there was nothing in those boxes, cause you simply inserted the underlined text?
I, I understand the question that you're stating, um, but, uh, so, I.
Could have been more, a bit more.
I guess it.
Wrong.
I guess the question too is, if you're preparing a presentation, could you arm yourself with a copy?
Yeah, and that's what the, the presentation has. I have both that are gonna be shown, it's side by side, you'll see both of them, what was existing and what's being proposed.
Yeah.
So you feel comfortable that'll cover this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I, this, I didn't see an issue on here, but, I mean, Ken, if you, I, I, I'm open to other perspectives, that's why I'm, I'm going through this now with you guys to make sure.
When I read it, I said, I, it was confusing if that's all that I saw. But if Danny is sufficient, putting up something else descriptive, then.
That's gonna be key, as long as there's a side by side, that's, so it's clarified, what it was before and what we want now.
And, and also key texts, or take any action therein, or in relation there to.
That's in every article.
And I know it's in every article, but we do that on purpose so that we're not pigeonholed to exactly what was, what's shown. And it's, it's so that there is some, some flexibility in what is, what the amendment actually is.
But to clarify, that does not mean that in-town meeting, the public can decide.
Oh, yeah, they can motion that.
I think, no, what she's gonna say is, if she wants to change.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
You mean the other ones that we didn't discuss?
Right, so like, they can't go into, to, yeah, wherever your cursor is.
But, but in theory, they could go into an underlying one and say, we don't like SPB, let's make it an N. Yeah, so, it, it is, it, it, yes.
They can't go into the ones that we haven't advertised and held a hearing on.
Correct.
Got it.
Which we did for those, that particular group, but.
I had them in red before, but because the warrant, there, there was like articles that they said, they couldn't put them in red, so it, I had to, there was a different way we had.
I just thought you could expand that table and put the one right above it, and, 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 and put a line through it.
Yeah, um.
Just make the table bigger and put the line through it.
We, we.
In the same box, I mean, that's what I thought, but I guess this went through town council.
Town council's the one who made that final.
So let them figure it out.
Danny, does your copy also have the, these things defined? Because I noticed the warrant doesn't define them, so if somebody isn't familiar.
Meaning like this, these sections?
No, like specifically SPB, SPZ.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I, that is a great point, I will add that, so, um, at the end of the table of use regulations, there is a, an explanation what SPB is, what SPZ is, but I can, I'll.
The warrant doesn't have it.
No, it doesn't, yeah, so I can actually clarify that. That's, that's because it's, it's not something that I think we, anyone accounted for. I did not over, I did not think about that. I assumed in, in, in our world that we typically deal with it, it's, it's knowledge, and you're right, it's, exactly.
Somebody who doesn't know anything.
Yeah, so I will, I will make that reference.
I think you made a valid point on the question, because I could visualize somebody at town, at town meeting asking a question about anything on that table, once you put it up on the board.
Yeah.
Like what's SPZ mean? What the, you know, and it's pretty obvious.
Yeah.
But any of the special permit ones.
Mm-hmm.
Who would know?
So, and luckily, it's only, there's only two of them on this page, it's only SPV and SPZ.
And that's all there is.
And permitted and no.
Yeah, well, there's, right, there's one for the select board, isn't there?
Yeah, there's a select board one.
Tiny one somewhere.
Yeah, there's a, there's, and that's SB.
Yeah. So, all right, thank you.
Is there one more warrant, is this it?
Yes, um, there's one more, which was the inclusionary, so, the, the change here was to make this H, and the reason for that is because within our inclusionary bylaw, H was reserved. There was a section that called it reserved for a future, um, you know, insertion, and since the, uh, this is the new inserted language, it's just gonna go right into H instead of being A and kicking everything down.
1033, I've got one for this in the second.
We can tell.
Yeah.
So, do you guys have any questions?
No, we're excited for yours.
Okay, so.
And I mean that seriously.
This is, um.
The thing, go ahead, Jonathan.
Didn't we ask for a date to be?
Yep, dated April 2, um, 2022.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. So, it was my understanding that state law changed in the last few years.